According to the Fire Marshal, so just keep that in mind. I think we're right at thirty right now, so if anybody, you know, wants to be out until we finish a few things and then come back in, but we'll make it work, okay? We have a couple of chairs up here on the front row for those that dater. There's one more seat here. So if you want to sign up for the public hearing tonight, the sign up sheet is there on the podium. You will have to sign up in order to speak.
All right, this call is meeting, no more.
Dear Lord, we thank you for giving us strength and help and the ability to be here tonight. Yes, and you be with us as we go about town's business. Grant us a wisdom as we make decisions for this town in hopes that they'll be in the best interest of this town. And we ask for the people in Crane and all going conflict there and be with them and their families. In Christ Jesus' name we pray.
If you would, if you recite the mission statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hay, if you would, would you recite the mission statement?
Absolutely, to advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Thank you. Commissioner Sauer, if you would, would you read a mission statement?
Solid City and Safe and Parted and Robbed Community Security. Innovation and Education Drive is set in global competitive society.
All right, thank you there. All right, I'm doing any adjustments to the agenda.
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I hear a second or yes, all right. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like signs and motion period.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve, second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like signs and motion period. All right. All right, this is your hour. Okay, all right. It's then a special honor for one of our own citizens who are one of our police officers that they retired. And with that in mind, I'd like to read this proclamation from the town of Solid City. Recognize the twenty-nine years and three months of service of James M. Underwood of the town of Solid City. Whereas James Underwood became a police officer February the eighth, nineteen ninety-three, in the Solid City Police Department. And whereas after eight years of service, Underwood was promoted to sergeant on December the twenty-fourth, two thousand and one. And whereas after nine years of service, Underwood was promoted to investigator on July the first, two thousand and ten. And whereas after five years of service, Underwood was promoted to detective lieutenant on March the first, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas after three months of service, Underwood was promoted to major of operation on June the twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas through his consistent education and law enforcement service to his community, James Underwood has remained an inspiring role model for all citizens of Solid City. And whereas his unflinching dedication of service to the town of Solid City, James Underwood has demonstrated a high level of character, a strong and active concern for the future of the town of Solid City citizen, a tireless regard for the safety of the town of Solid City community, and an unwavering compassion for his fellow man. And whereas Major James Underwood announced his retirement from the town of Solid City Police Department as of April first, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas the North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eight seven point two provides that retiring members of municipal law enforcement agency may receive at the time of their retirement the badge worn or carried by them during their service with the municipality. And whereas the North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one, one eighty-seven point two further provides that the governing body of the municipal law enforcement agency may, in its discretion, award to the retiring member the service weapon of such retiring member. And therefore, let it be resolved by the town of Solid City Board of Commissioners that the badge and service weapon of block model forty-five SN BLKG two oh nine, worn and carried by Major James Underwood be awarded to him on the occasion of his retirement. And therefore, let it be further resolved that I, Thomas K. Price the third, may approach him of the town of Solid City and on behalf of the Solid City Board of Commissioner and all citizens, do hereby honor James Underwood for his selfless twenty-nine years and three months of dedicated service with this resolution. This is the twenty-first day of March, two thousand and twenty-two. And on behalf of the town, we thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure. We know, we thank you too, because we know you support him all the way. And on behalf of the town, we've just got a little something, something for you over there. And now it's your turn. You want to say a few words?
I'd like to say y'all know me, I'm not a very, if you might say, a public speaker. I do speak my mind and for, I'm thanking y'all for letting me do that for the past twenty-nine years. Like I said, I love my job, love this town, and I hope everything keeps going in a northern direction. Like I said, if there's anything y'all ever need, y'all know where I live. Y'all come to me and ask me anything or ask me to do anything, I'll make sure it gets to. Now we're gonna get out of y'all's hair, so there's a heat.
All right, next item up there are these are public hearings. So we need open the public hearing now. Now declare the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Pro team. For commissioners, we have items in our packets on page thirteen with staff memos and provided. The subject is a conditional zoning outage located one forty-six foot road. Propose zoning changes to Howard Commercial additional. For the city, Bryce Pearl Horton proposes to resolve seven point five nine two acres. Bryce Pearl Horton proposes to resolve seven point five nine two acres from agriculture residential to Howard Commercial condition. Those uses are motor vehicle, this includes repair, maintenance, painting, and body mart. A trucking business garage, truck parking, exterior truck park storage, automobile graveyard, junkyard, and salvage yard. Subject property is identified as one forty-six foot road and parcel number one four one five nine, nine one four four three, nine one four four four. Subject property is owned by Henry Horton Prestige and Bryce T. Horton Trucking LLC. There's two different names that covers these three tracks. It's located outside of the city's corporate limits. Size of surrounding tract are an average of eighteen point five acres. The land developer plan recommends mixed use for the subject property. To give us just a little background, mixed use, it says mixed use for areas are often near major streets and highways or in the central business district and contain a variety of commercial, public, and residential land uses. Commercial uses could include retail shops, shopping centers, convenience stores, restaurants, offices, medical services, and other businesses. And then it mentions about public facilities and residential use of these areas are typically at a high density, maybe standalone. Or I'm gonna switch my flip screen or flip a few pages here and go over to the page.
If anybody has any cell phones or electronic devices, if you would, if you put them on silent, please. All right, thank you very much. Sorry, Jack.
No problem. I'm gonna switch over to page sixteen and talk about relationship abuses. Surrounding land uses include agriculture, single-family residential, cemetery, and county recycling center. It's located across the street. The property is surrounded by AR zoning. And before I switch to the next page, I'm just going to give you the planning board recommendation. They recommended by a vote of six to one that the amendment be approved, including the conditions consented by the app. And that's where I'm gonna jump to, if you will. Page eighteen, there's a site map that the applicant provided. When reviewed, there's no sun on that that are consistent with what we would see on normal sketch and site plans. This describes the areas where the operations will be located, the buildings and the lot areas in the rear. All right, continue with me as a part of my presentation, let's jump over to page fifty-two. There's some repetitiveness in the packet, and that's why I'm going to jump. There was a list of what we call impacts and randoms, maybe maybe this is a term that you found on page fifteen and sixteen. Sort of combined in page fifty-two, that's where I jumped there, which is the conditions that the planning board recommended to be included, and they've also been consented by petition. All right, conditions allowed uses, I've already read those, so I'm not going to repeat that. Condition B, hours for operations, seven days a week, nine AM to six PM. Maximum number of employees on site is three. Product will be built in one phase. Instruction site plan is unpermitted approval required prior to any development. Obtain vinyl zoning inspection proof for town planning when everything is completed. Provide copy of D recorded in the Shannon County Registry that commands the three lots and one lot. Obtain flood determination approval prior to site plan approval. Provide a copy of the set approved for the environment of the prior to site plan approval. Inox boxes will be provided for fire department access. Lighting shutters provided, driveway drives, parking areas, and interested building that is sufficiently illuminated to ensure security of property and safety of persons. Provide a copy of completed water termination from DEQ prior to site plan approval. Remove all items that are located within the two hundred foot vegetated buffer as identified in flat earth twenty sixteen page one twenty-one prior to site plan approval. Obtain replanning and receiving plan approval for the disturbed vegetated property prior to site plan approval. Provide seed mixture types and quantity. Type shall be beneficial for wildlife, native annual grains are perfect for the season, native riparian grass, and native forest plants. Replant and reseed all disturbed areas within the two hundred foot vegetated buffer as identified in the subject plan prior to site plan approval. Shall use infiltration practices, and these are listed in our ordinance, rain gardens, it could be an example of this. Parking lot bio retention areas increase sheet flow instead of ditching and disconnect impervious areas instead of detention ponds to maintain pre-development hydrographic conditions, including base flow, hearing low flow conditions. That's an engineer requirement. But you know, page fifty-three, just got a couple more unfinished. Provide certified survey of the total area of imperviousness. Calculation determined percent impervious is new equals new impervious area divided by existing impervious area. Provide certified survey for the total area disturbance. Provide copy of DEQ post-construction stormwater management permit prior to the flat earth, that's a state requirement. Provide stormwater management plan and calculation showing free and post-development offerings. The wash water from washing trucks and trailers should not drain into a designated stream. Obtain DOT driveway permit approval to extend driveway pipe to accommodate tractor traffic. No new driveways are closed. Install tall evergreen trees staggered planted with branches touching the ground along Silk Road and the southern property boundary. And then lastly, preserve existing vegetation and forest along northern, eastern property boundaries. More, there is a ordinance in front of you tonight, page fifty-four. Consider when you're making your motions and approvals from the worksheet on page fifty-five. Since you bet that ordinance is what you were doing on. That concludes my presentation, Mayor Pro team. Glad to answer any questions and.
Yes, sir.
The, I'm talking about washing truck. I thought that got drawn.
Yeah, the, initially, there was a proposal to put in a new building to wash trucks. And I think there's still some routine truck washing that can happen or could happen on site. And the wash waters just not allow to be run on the ground from washing trucks and roll into your nearby ditches or your stream. And so that's to cover any, any washing of any truck, not a commercial operation, but just washing vehicles in general, commercial property.
Along the border with cemetery, is that what it means?
We could take a look at some aerial photos, good question. The best photo to look at is probably on page twenty-three. There appears to be some trees on page twenty-three. That could be a good question for the applicant. So the, and then I've got that Google map on page thirty-one. There appears to be some tree between the operation and the cemetery.
What will that remain?
Well, as a condition, the owner, and when we were discussing, I should say, the applicant, we put in there preserve existing vegetation and forest along the northern and eastern property boundaries. But it should be more specific, we need to be, what that width of preservation should be, or leave it as is. The photo from twenty twenty-two on the Google maps, that could be a reference point.
Little left, left screen, cemetery.
I had looked at it from the cemetery side, Commissioner Brown. But that is a, looks to me a very steadily wooded area.
I just want from cemetery, this screen, just out of respect for the family.
And Jim, add to what you say, also right there in that curve, there's a memorial wall there. I can't remember if that is what is a memorial wall that had black color. Way it's facing, if you stand there looking at it, you're looking straight down there at the property.
Full plate. Second intention is going to be a bubble, put the side rule in here, cool rule. Yes, sir. Yeah, and proposal is to go with the tall evergreen trees, like we're leaving encyclopes, it's a variety. And the stagger plant, so that they, once they grow to maturity, they'll create a visual barrier.
Jack, somewhere when I was reading through this material, I read something somewhere that in addition to that, there was some other conditions or something that was supposed to have already been met or was in the process. Do you have a list of what, what exactly what it did specify?
Yeah, I'll just give some background. The trucking operation, when it started, it was going in where previously trucking operation had been. And so it was grandfathered. The way our ordinance reads is that that's perfectly fine to replace the trucking operation with another trucking operation. But any expansion and growth of that business is not covered under that non-performing status. And once you do, it does grow, then additional approvals are required. So that's, that's kind of what sets the stage for where we are here this evening. So that would be one issue that we've got, that we're working on by bringing this application to the board. Is to allow the use to grow, expand. Number two, there's some buffers. That was another section of the ordinance along the creek or the perennial stream that crosses along the property and is two hundred foot buffer. No disturbance is allowed in that area, so no new disturbance. You think it's existing, it's there, and any new disturbance is supposed to remain as it is. And so I don't leave off any. So we got the buffers, that's one, the non-performing, we already talked about the expanding. Substantial clearing and erosion, that's a, once you go over an acre of disturbance, you've got to get a the road control store remain permitted and site plan approval. And then and then expansion of the use. A new use that wasn't permitted, which was the storage of junk vehicles and automobiles. That kind of, that's what we identified and do a complaint, it was a complaint received and we started having a conversation with applicant owner. Because this was far as here is seen, was to try to pursue the growth of the business at this location.
I have a question. So the perennial stream, that's the blue line running through the northern, the northern section of the property, correct? I'm looking at the aerial photo, well, yeah, it's on, well, it's on twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen and twenty seventeen aerial photo.
You got a page number?
Page twenty-four and twenty-five. All right, go ahead. So the perennial stream is, that's the blue line, so it's, so there's no, so no new disturbance, you know, within two hundred feet of that stream, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and there's a good survey on page nineteen. It shows that buffer. That was done prior to purchase of the property. It shows a two hundred foot buffer, it's sort of, it's on the northern side of the property.
Yeah.
And then wraps itself around and cuts through that block building. And then moves straight to the street, so there's a, part of this property is out of the buffer. But there is substantial amount of lot on that is in the buffer. So some of that area was already disturbed and can continue to be disturbed.
Okay.
But any area that was not disturbed, part of two thousand and three. It's not, because we need to go back to a natural vegetable.
So I guess the question, so does, if I see the vegetative, so I'm looking at page eighteen and see the vegetative buffer going through the middle of lot one, is there an additional, and I'm looking, so that in lot two, the vegetative buffer will remain in lot two? And then we're going to add vegetative buffer in lot three along the southern boundary, is that what I read now?
So the buffer is pretty much one hundred percent just on lot one. It's on a portion of it, so everything on lot two and lot three is outside of it.
So lot, so lot two can be cleared, we could, so that can be cleared and used for storage. And then lot three, there's no vegetative buffer along, along the southern, the southern boundary.
That's correct.
But is the condition that there will be vegetative buffer along lot three, is that what I, no?
Just, just the buffer would be on lot one where it was previously not disturbed. That's what we need to come back. That's actually a, an ordinance that we got through a four one permit from the state. It's written in state department.
So the, the lots of nine one four four five is a wooded, is a wooded area. That, that's not part of this, that's not part of this, the three parcels.
There is a fourth parcel, nine one four four five, that is not a part of this proposal. It is not, it is owned by the owner, okay, same owner, but it was not included in this project. So that would be the, for future development, so and so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Another question.
This is the armed corps involved with it.
Um, I don't think so. Typically, we get them involved, it's for a disturb the creek, toss it, build a new pond or something like that, I don't think so. We will have DEQ involved, the state with stormwater management permits and most potential purposes. I don't think armed corps have it.
Jack, clarify something for me to do it. I know when we've had other folks that weren't have salvage operation there that I believe in the orders there requires some type of opaque fencing or something like that around the salvage areas is existent. And you're right by there, there's definitely salvage vehicles there that are in some, that they're not capable of being moved on their own power. So is there, is that applied to what we're doing here?
It does, so the applicant has took a look at our options for providing piping spring. And option three, if you look at our video, is the staggered evergreen trees. So from a staff standpoint, that would be a sufficient spring pipe to meet that piping spring. Others that I'm aware of have chosen different options. Fencing with opaque slats and then trees in addition to the fence. And that's a acceptable practice as well. So that, that's sort of where we are this evening, we have to pay that staff's payment. But if there was a community or the board wished to have a condition that the pipe A B fencing and landscaping, that could be a condition that I think could be somewhat reasonable. Obviously, it's going to be consented by the applicant, but you could have something that would move similar to that in the finished product. But that's where we already see before our proposal, it would have to be something comes up as a suggestion. Add it to the condition. I would recommend it be a condition.
So maybe I, maybe I misunderstood, when I, when I said buffer, what I probably meant was screening. there's going to be screening along the southern, southern, that's, I assumed what, yeah, that's.
We'll go back to that, so I'll, I'll reiterate, we're talking about landscape screen.
Yep.
We're looking for landscape screen along that silver, but.
Yep, the fooling.
Yep. And then along that southern border.
Okay, this is the bound, the boundary between nine-one-four-four-four and one-four-one-four-seven. Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No worries.
And, and also nine-one-four-four-three, uh, adjoins one-four-one-four-seven as well.
Yep.
So it would continue along that entire southern boundary.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And then your eastern, your northern boundaries are adjoining property that's owned by the applicant, or that is there a, uh, agriculture or forest for use? And our landscaping probably wouldn't apply to those two. And that's why we didn't say there had to be a landscaping buffer along the eastern boundary that we talked about earlier. Uh, but there wasn't a reserve in.
Vegetated buffer, the thing you're talking about planting with screening and everything, how tall are they going to be, starting with? Because I don't suspect they're going to be much more than four, five feet tall when they're planted.
So, um, our tree planting ordinance, uh, has minimum standards for planting. And so, uh, the large trees, we're looking for an inch caliber, smaller, three-quarter inch caliber, and it's at the, you know, got a foot from the ground, um, but those trees tend to be a little bit larger than four or five feet. Uh, your bush and shrub, we're looking for those to be anywhere from fifteen to eighteen inches tall. And there's sometimes a mixture of those two, if you find a few friends who stuff. We don't have a, uh, great guidance in our ordinance currently to replant the buffer, that's something staff can be working on, or they can present, but there'd be a clear replacement plan for buffers. But the, the kind of going on guidance we receive from other, um, locations, we do get some good guidance about natives and, uh, things that have fruit on, fruit bearing, uh, that are good for wildlife, that's what the purpose of the buffer is for.
The second part of that follow-up to that, is that being said, how long will it take for the, the vegetated buffer that's planned to get sufficient height where it will actually screen house up?
It took a while for that buffer to get there.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what I'm getting there, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while for that to come into play, so. Other questions? Alright, well, I don't have any more questions, board, right now, we have, uh, three people signed up to speak, and first is Doug and Alicia Foster.
Mayor Pro Tim, I might ask William for his advice on this. Um, William, would it be appropriate to allow the applicant to speak first? Or does it even matter?
Yes, that's difficult.
Okay.
And then any opposition? Doesn't matter to me.
No, I would say that's typical flow.
Yeah, that's fine, he's down here, so, if that's it, Bryce, you want to step up here for the podium? If you would, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Bryce, twelve-nine, twenty-sixty-four, South.
Thank you.
I don't really know what to say other than, uh, you know, I grew a lot over the years that I didn't expect, um, kind of just happened. But I wanted it to, and I, um, so I'm just taking advantage of the opportunity, guys, blessing a lot, and friends, workers, community, people. A lot of people have come by this shop on a daily basis, get this and that, I start what I'm doing, if not, never asked for any kind of money from anybody. It is messy, a lot messy, I just don't have the time to make it the way it needs to be, so. Kind of thankful that this is happening, that way I believe we get together. And, uh, and Jack, we've worked together for a few years now on this project, um, you know, COVID hit, I had to, you know, go back and get some trucks. Kind of just happened at one time, you know, Jack said people was complaining, and we did something about it, so I said, let's go ahead and get it. And, uh, you know, as far as out, it might, it might look junky around here, but it's about a month. You don't know how many times I've seen, you know, thousands of, just by walking out there and getting this, getting that, and then able to get the load there, or, drive my ass home, dude, don't have to wait till the next day, just, whatever I need to do to keep my business going. We all, chicken, come out here in South City, and wonderful to work here. Any recommendations, I'm sure you guys speak good about me too. Yeah, the main thing is to get it cleaned up and get it in ordinance with town and community and, like, the way it is. I don't really have too much of it to say. I appreciate it.
Do you have any questions for Bryce, for you? Go to the end.
I guess I do, so, you, you said you want to get it cleaned up, what, you know, what, what is, what is your timeframe for getting it cleaned up?
Uh, actually, we've been working the past week, so, you know, going to the camp, and, um, but, you know, shit. Main thing, well, it's real wet back there, the camp, can't move, it's hard. But once you set them in place, you know, which, it should be okay for that, um, I hope thirty, sixty days. Some of them here, it's hard to move when it runs. Yeah, he organizes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, man? Well, that's fine. Alright, well, thank you. Alright, our next person on leave, Doug and Alicia Foster?
Just Doug, I thought. Okay. I just, you said yes, so I, I wrote her name. Doug Foster, um, actually, July seven-five-four, Cedar Creek Drive, two-seven-two-zero-five, um, actually on a farm out in, adjoining communities, uh, and plan to make that our home place, uh, here in the near future, so we're making a major investment in Silver City. Meaning, not a big farm for this area, but sizable, and, uh, some homes and using working with the planning and others to, uh, go through that actually. That, we're actually on both the, the night, the night we're in the county, or name, road names as well, in last year. But, uh, we, we came upon this, uh, the situation here, through it, uh, sort of by, by chance, that we were looking for real speak of the area. And so we made notice of all the areas, and so we're coming about spoken eyes. And, uh, as we, uh, learned about what went on here, uh, basically, this was, this was rezoning request, not a request just from a, from an individual, not from Mr. Gordon to, uh, come and say, hey, we'd like to grow a business. It did, as, uh, Jack had mentioned, start out with some complaints from neighbors, uh, that's unfortunate. But even with that, uh, Mr. Gordon, I like where you're at, that you, that you want to clean the area up and grow. I'm here to support you to grow and prosper, that's what, uh, my thoughts are. We want people to be able to do that for the business, we want Silver City to do that as well. Uh, the fact that it has come with some personal dangers to make that happen, despite concern, especially for someone coming in from the outside. And so I heard that, I put my ears up, said, let's, let's hear what's going on there. And then we found out, hey, there's a rezoning request, so, okay, we might want to be interested in that, now let's look at it. And I'll tell you, coming here new, I look to you, and each of you is being the gatekeepers. You are the gatekeepers for this process. This process started, and I went through a nice forty-some page document, and back in two thousand and sixteen, it says there'll be no maintenance there. This gentleman says, God's blessed you, and that's good. And God, people come by, and you run your business, and I look at that, and I come from a mechanical background. So I look at that and say, hey, that, that, that's good, that's good, I support that. Uh, but as it's grown, it's about run his, his size there. And, uh, when it includes the, the, uh, scrapyard as well, uh, neighbors need to be considered. Uh, your graveyard needs to be considered. I don't think there's a full buffer if you go to the graveyard, I think I've heard that mentioned from some people on the board. Go there and you go to the, uh, memorial site, uh, you have clear access for use. But that's easy to see from aerial sites to the distance site, uh, from the road, and notice that's not. Uh, I'm certain here mainly that you guys be the gatekeepers, because there's been some non-compliance in the past. And the best way to judge future obligations and future compliance is look at history. And so I, 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 Mr. Hayes, I, uh, I thank you for your question, as far as the timeframe. I think that's important. I think when you guys look at this, we trust that you'll add in some specific timeframe. These must be met, and they shall be met, and I think that, uh, we'll, we'll work with, uh, Jack and others, he said he would, I take him as that honor, and make sure that happens. Uh, the timeframe for vegetative buffers is, is worrisome. It's not weeks, it's not months, it's not, it's years, it's many years until you build a nice buffer. You guys have a nice precedent, you've already set, wash, right down the street here. I went and looked at that, do that, because that's something that you've done, and you guys have that, your own presence. And that's something I can drive through and not notice. Once you notice it's there, you can still see, and you're not, you're not covering everything. But at least it's acceptable. I think you ought to use that as your presence, as your presence, you ought to be steps, set some tight standards with that. So we look for, you know, the aesthetics to your community, that's how your community grows, people want to like you. We came here, and we came looking, we're looking to purchase, and we look carefully. And, and so we, we take the notice of what was there, we take the notice of the area, and say, that's sort of a little bit, as you said, it's gotten out of hand, uh, and it needs to be cleaned up, I think you do it. But, uh, I support that. So I'm not here to not say, don't do this, be gatekeeper, be the gatekeeper that you deserve to be and should be. The other point that comes up, though, is the wastewater. There was a wash, there's not going to be a wash, I read your, your paper, as I go through your forty-three page papers, there is a wash, and there's not a wash, there's going to be a wash, and there's not going to be a wash. Hey, I'm confused, is there going to be washers or not? So here in life, there's not going to be a building, but there's going to be a washing. The state of North Carolina has ordinances, it says, hey, you have to have total containment. So zero emissions of oily wastewater, state of North Carolina. I'm very familiar with the, uh, ordinances, uh, with the statutes, how it works. I, I had a career that worked through that. You can't discharge oily wastewater from a wash facility for oily drops into the state of North Carolina waterways. The Army Corps of Emergency Engineers not going to have that, the State of North Carolina, our E Q departments not going to have that. Uh, there needs to be something you guys need to have beforehand, before you approve that. So again, I look to you as the gatekeepers, either you approve it with the conditions, and if the compliance, the local standards is done, and it's, it's going to cost you a bunch. It's going to cost you a bunch, I don't know if you're aware of that, you might have to do some good work to, and you, but your, your clients deserve some clean equipment, and they won't have. But, uh, what are the charges? When you find out what it takes to, uh, treat wastewater and to contain wastewater, and if you will contain those wastewater, which you have to do, you've got to contain them and have secondary containment, that's the, that's the state requirement, that's a national requirement. You just can't get by with this, EPA, this base, it's nineteen seventies since then. I urge you guys to look at this tightly, look at it clearly, and especially for the wastewater side, uh, if you don't have that in place right now, you don't have a plan, you don't have the engineering behind it, you don't have anything. Okay, you have no, you have somebody, we're going to try to do this, but when you get into digging into it, you can find out, oh, no, what have I gotten into? What is, and I'll, I'll share with you, you'll say, what is the state requiring, and why? It's, it's almost ridiculous, because that's what requires us. You have zero wastewater, no oily wastewater can, can leave that site. Uh, and so I ask you to consider that, I ask you sincerely, be the gatekeepers, as you should be. Help this gentleman build his business. Let Jack work with him to get the requirements in place. Uh, you may not want to approve this tonight, do you have those things, have you decided what type of buffers you want to have, visual buffers? Because you need to have that, to leave here and say, well, we'll have this time that might be this big, it might be that long, it might be taking that long, you've got nothing. You've got a plan, but you have no evidence of what's going to happen. And again, I say, let's, let's get it, get your ducks in a row, support him. Support his business, support everything he wants to do, help him get there, be the gatekeeper to make you do, make sure we do it to the right of the community, and certainly the right of the state.
Cool. Any questions, Chris Foster, before we just, we go, and you take your questions?
Sure, I'm open to taking questions.
I reckon that's all that, okay, alright, thank you, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to offer a correction.
Yes.
Uh, I stated earlier that the periodic was a strong buffer between, uh, the property and the cemetery. And I think if you're just looking at the maps that I provided in the packet, it's a little, uh, you don't get to see the full picture of the cemetery. Well, I've got it up on my screen, Mr. Foster mentioned, that's why I've been looking, looking at on G I S, there is a gap. Uh, we can look on our screen and see it as well, uh, where you can see that memorial that you mentioned earlier, and there is no trees between, uh, property and memorial. I wouldn't stand corrected in my opinion. She gonna pull that up? Can you pull that area up?
It is, it's done in the text.
She's there, see if you can zoom in a little bit. That memorial was that, uh, diagonal line, about middle of the stream, there's a little land between them, doesn't have trees, so. We would have a buffer on that southern boundary line by ordinance, uh, meaning that high face string, but along that eastern boundary, uh, because there's a property to be owned by the owner, would be a buffer on that eastern boundary by our ordinance. Let me give you the following condition, the, the, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Jack.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, next speaker to sign up?
I am.
I am.
I am, Pete, Pete, I'm begging for it.
Um, I am a closest neighbor, I live at three-three-one Social Road. Um, I'm not opposed to this being approved. Um, he's been a great neighbor for the last six years, I own my five acre piece of property. Um, he's always helpful, um, they've been out there cleaning up trash the last few weeks, so I don't have any chance. He's good for the community, he's good to the people.
Good. Thank you, question? Alright. Uh, we, before we get to, that's all of our speakers that we had signed up. There's three, Bryce.
Oh, no, 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 God, he was done.
Alright, yeah, he dealt in line. Um, I noticed in our pack that there was a letter in here from a, uh, actually prepared by a D F O, a professional engineer, and there were several things in there. Can you, can you expand on that for every?
Then, uh, I guess it all builds from, uh, Mr. Atkinson's email. Uh, and he has a, must have a contact with this, Mr. Roach, Jeff Roach, heat engineering and design. Uh, Mr. Atkinson's a little estate agent developer, must have been a friend of his or, or acquaintance. He asked him, uh, his, his opinion, and Jeff must have given him that, I provided that as information, we received his staff and shared with the board. Uh, in addition to that, um, Mr. Atkinson provided a letter directed to the board and the planning board as well on page fifty-one, so. Uh, that's, that's where it comes from, so Mr. Atkinson's got some basic comments on his letter, and then Mr. Roach provided, I guess, um, a list of, uh, suggestions, if you will. Does that answer your question, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I, I saw it in there, I didn't recognize the name, I think, Pete Langton, from a solid professional engineer. Any more questions from the board?
Yeah, so I've got, I do have a question, so, um, Jack, um, yeah, Mr. Foster did mention the, the E Q permit, but can you, can you give me some more information here? Because it says we're, the, one of the conditions is to provide a copy of the N C D E Q. Because it says we're, the, one of the conditions is to provide a copy of the NCD EQ post-construction stormwater management permit approval prior to site plan approval. Tell me more about that.
Yeah, that's a state law. We, um, it's passed in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. Our ordinance in two thousand and nine. It's for any development house, and this is not just residential work. Any development starting within an acre has to get a post-construction storm warning. Just a general requirement, um, that we've issued and required on many of our laws.
But that, but that does, that does not address, that does not address the washing of the vehicles?
Um, if we, it would, it would, that would be in, just on any development, right, whether they're washing vehicles. I think we're going to talk about washing vehicles on a whole nother level of something that's not currently in our ordinance. We don't address that in our ordinance of washing vehicles. That is addressed to the EQ law. And so, uh, we do know that we shouldn't be washing water, washing vehicles in the water that's free. That's a, that's a standard. And that's why I put that in there as a, and advise people to agree to it, that it is consent, um, listed conditions. But we, we would push, um, anybody with washing vehicles to coordinate with the state. And, uh, I could get a copy of those approved if they were, they were issued.
And it's saying there that that has to be approved?
Well, that's the store, that's the storm water. So that's not, that's not the wastewater. So, yeah, I, I think, I, yeah, I, I think that's one of the things we need to get some guidance on because, you know, I mean, I know it's, we're, we're not planning on going into the, to the storm water. But what about the groundwater and where is that? What's, what's the, what's the water table look like in that area?
Um, if you don't mind, Mr. Foster, I just, does Bryce want to speak to the washing of vehicles? That may, may, may help some of this number section.
Yep.
We don't.
We won't look at.
I don't know what's up on the washing vehicles. We have to wash, you know, I guess the smelly smell of the trailer to the chicken plant. Spray them out, you know, keep them clean. It's one of the requirements for the chicken plant. But, uh, I guess I could go to the truck wash and get them washed. You know, that's kind of money and time and everything else. So I had Jack create some kind of trap. I mean, I've asked him about getting a wastewater truck, you know, running two miles around Walmart. Dump it, but you have to have a license and all that. So I've, I've looked into that stuff. I don't have anything in place because I don't know what I'm allowed to do, what I'm not allowed to do. So, you know, I'm kind of guy, I'm, you got to tell me what to do. Say, hey, man, do this, do that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no worries.
I'm not, I don't go looking to do my homework. Find rules and regulations within a week.
No, no worries. I think, and I think, you know, uh, we're here, we're, we're trying to help you as well. So I think, Jack, maybe we can get some, some guidance on that from DEQ?
I may be able to address some of that as well, Bryce. Sure. Uh, and I do so, I didn't mention you guys, I'm a professional engineer. So, uh, Bryce, with that, you know, you asked a question that you're not going to like the answer to. Okay? It is oily. Now, I wasn't understanding because any of the information I read, it didn't indicate that you were painting the entire size of trailers all week. If you go down that path, you have, you have a much better chance and opportunity to be not so stiff to your pocketbook. You will not be able to afford oily wastewater leaving your site or, or containing. You can't leave your site. You will not be able to afford that. It's, it's a very, uh, you, you want, what you will do is you'll get, you'll get involved into a containment. And you'll contain it, you'll pop it, you'll store it, you'll have secondary storage. And that's going to cost you tens and tens of thousands of dollars. Do that because the state regulations are strict. You might have to go out there every day, every day and look at that site, even if it's raining or not raining. And you might have to sign up a signature if you're doing a statement that says, hey, I've inspected secondary containment, it's clean, it's dry. There's no sheen and oil or anything. And you have to do that day and daily and day. It's just, it's a tour you probably don't want to get into. But if you're talking about cleaning poultry debris, chicken waste, things of that sort, it's not oily. You've got a, you've got a better path. But once you decide you want to clean an engine, wash off a starter, or anything of that sort. You're, you want to do that inside and contain the side of your four walls and never let that go. You don't want to ask the state for your, you should ask the state, but when you, you're not going to like the answer. So what you, what you want to do is if you can make your business most profitable to you, we're all supporting that. Uh, and stay away from oily wastewater because it will cost you. But when you say chicken waste, that's a little better. You can, you can get by with that.
First of all, you don't know what I can do. I see what you're saying. I mean, I'm literally go out and wash his parts. I mean, we first thought about it, talking about being able to keep my customers safe. I guess, you know, that's a big customer. You know, I do whatever I can to keep them happy because they do whatever they can to keep me happy. But as far as washing cars, I mean, yeah, I like going to look nice. I don't know, going out to the regular area. I catch from DOT and federal motor carriers. So, yeah, I mean, of course I wash them. I don't know, working in Greece and all that stuff. But I see what you're saying. I mean, yeah, we need to contend with the oil part. But, uh, this is mostly, you know, washing up trailers.
That, that part, you, you find this, this would be better, this is a fair path. It's going to be easier. Balance is easier path, not be so expensive. It should be profitable. Support your path. I support you with washing the, uh, washing trailers still if you're going. Do you find that the state's going to have fixed, they require us?
Jack, so, um, there's a lot of, a lot of things on the list here. What can the town and maybe even joint effort with EDC do to help Bryce succeed here and also meet the requirements that you guys to meet? State, federal requirements? What can be done? Uh, I think the last thing anybody wants is to for, for Bryce to get fifty percent down this path and not be uncompleted because some of these state federal requirements are on us. So is there anything that can be done to kind of prime the pump, not, not getting it all, but you'll prime the pump, so to speak, to help this project succeed in a way that's going to be beneficial for the community?
Yeah. And I think, uh, you know, we, we try to do that with pre-developing meetings as one of our attempts to make sure our bases, these state agencies don't show up at our pre-developments. It's hard to get on them. So it would be something I need to reach out directly, uh, to DEQ handles for wastewater and find out what those, uh,
processes are.
Whether it's a couple of programs, you know, washing out the chicken waste with, uh, trailer, trailers or washing vehicles in general, whatever else. I could help with some of that. You know, we have staff that runs that down. The, um, we've got a list of engineers. We, we can share that. So that the property owner can then call four, five or dozen of them and say, what kind of, um, process we give them or this project. So he has some competitiveness going on.
Which I need, I have to reach out and talk.
Is there any EDC?
Last thing is that EDC, I, I don't, I can't speak to them, but there probably is. There, there could be some, uh, trial day. Yeah.
They've got, they've got the water, water management.
And, and so all the, all the complaints that came from neighbors, because, you know, you know, we want a success here. We want a win-win. So is there, is there any issues with, uh, timeframe or compliance with complaints that Bryce is concerned with?
Well, one thing I was trying to set up with, uh, the conditions is if you, you'll take a look at a couple of them on pages fifty-two and fifty-three. We wrote in, um, several of those ones related to the buffer. If we could try to get those done before site plan, before we move forward with, uh, operational part of this project.
She's talking about N and O?
Yes, sir. N, N. Let's start with A over, it looks like A, N, O, maybe.
P?
P?
Yeah. Those, I think that was a list of ones I thought that, um, we could get addressed prior to site plan review. And obviously, of course, site plan group, it's just required. But I think that group that you just listed is one of those efforts that given ahead of, um, that initial violation of the state law that we're responsible for administering. That will kind of get us in the right direction. Um, other neighboring things, I, I just want to, I skipped over, um, in my presentation on page seventeen. During the planning board, we received several, uh, pieces of information. Some of them we've already talked about. We talked about the screen along the cemetery, the fencing at Marshada Parks. Washwater, we talked about that. And then there's a couple of things that there exists. We just jotted those down, the staff did during the planning week, so we can share with you folks to see. And then I think Commissioner Price, their pro-ten price, um, you know, list that came from that engineer, uh, heat engineering design, uh, maybe some things. Just to answer your question, Rich, is there some in-between satisfied community, uh, from, uh, them being happy and then also Bryce being successful?
Because I, I know this process takes time.
Yeah.
So my, my concern is, you know, obviously everybody spoke here tonight. Wants Bryce to be successful, no one's opposed to it. This is a long list, A all the way through Z and double A. How, how long this can take to get all that done? I don't want, uh, leave a situation where it takes so long that there's a non-compliance holdout or a code issue. Bryce gets a letter, you got to clean this up, you got to clean that up because of your code damage. So that's one concern. Another one is just the, you know, what can
I would have been covered.
Be successful because it's, there's so many requirements.
Yeah. I guess, what, what can, what sort of, as a listing, what can we get started on now? So that when, you know, when, what's the most pressing and how can we help? And, and do we, what about the, the engineers that we've worked with? And we try to put him in touch with the engineers and done work for the town?
Yeah. We maintain a list and it's with the department of all the folks we need to work with directly or folks that have all been plans for us to review and who know this, this stuff.
Right.
And he's right, uh, engineering, uh, making contacts with engineering teams. The word is that they choose who they want to work with, the business is, it's a little tough. But, um, I'm seeing a different vision. So I understand this.
Jack, I have a question. On, on page seventeen, it says that several citizens were concerned about this business.
Um,
how many complaints did you have?
Complaints?
One, two, five, three?
I'm going to say a hand.
Well, how many say?
Five.
So you have five people on that corridor. And have problems with this. So looking at all the, um, you know, six, looking at the highway and whatever. What percentage of the highway now is some commercial or will be some commercial something?
Set that right.
Or where exactly? Because he orders to the highway.
He orders something.
So what, what percentage of some commercial will be some commercial?
Right now on Silk Road, the, um, the corner where the storage business is. She's got the map up. I'll look on page twenty-seven as well. That, uh, store metal building for sale lot. It's on how a commercial in the location of the Chinatown housing park is also known how.
Okay. So the complaints are coming from people that live there whose property may eventually become commercial?
Um, well, we've got Mr. Foster. He's, he's in play.
You know, when you do have commercial property, you don't have things come along. Instances that people obviously don't agree to, that there's things that we need to look at. What percentage is going to eventually become?
Mr. Atkinson. There was a lady at the planning board meeting that's not here this evening. Oh, she's behind me. And then a couple of anonymous complaints.
Well, I know there was a building sold down at the ferry man that was sold.
That's the building, you can talk about that.
Oh, that's true. So, um, oh, you just bought that, okay. So that was already commercial?
It was zone agriculture residential and it still is today.
But they were selling cars from there.
And Bryce bought it with the intention to do the same type of business. And then his business has grown outside of that non-performing status. And that's why we're here this evening is, is he's going beyond that non-performing status and needs, now he needs town board approval to, to expand. And that's where it's at.
But they were selling cars at a fair amount of time. I know. So if it wasn't a commercial, it's still still possible.
Um, but at one time that wasn't in the solid city.
Well, this happened.
Nineteen, uh, two thousand and three, it came into the solid city. And before that, it wasn't in the
Well, this is aftermath.
But it was, it was considered a non-performing. Yeah. And we, and we allow another point used to continue. And that's why did he continue to non-perform? And that's a thing. Once it expands out of its, uh, status to where it was, it has to have town board approval to be approved. Mr. Fay?
So the, the complaints that you got, it says all appearance on the which trash, something, is that type of thing? But this, this effort, this application seems like it's designed to clean that up and the buffer, is that correct?
Um, the, the application that was made was to bring it forth to the board, allow these uses to happen on that lot as, as proposed. I don't think cleaning up is a part of our zoning laws. If there's any additional cleaning up, it needs to happen. It's going to have to come through the conditions, additional conditions. So, um, staff is trying to bring you what I believe that, um, would meet those requirements. Bryce has told you a few things that he'll do above and beyond that. And that's how we come up with that condition. So if there's anything, uh, more that is willing or desire, it, it has to be added condition.
But it just seems like a lot of this is designed to, I believe, need some of the complaints that causes to be here, to be here. It seems like a lot of these conditions, A through double A.
Would be to address the, the codes of violence.
So is that, is that, that's what I'm asking, is that correct?
Yeah, some of, some of those.
Hold on, they had something here. Listen, it sounds like to me that there's been a lot of work done, but yet there's still a lot of work that needs to be done before we could actually get to something that we can put our hands around. We've got the wastewater or stormwater issue. We got buffer issues. We've got a bunch of stuff going on. And just throw something out there. And, and like everybody said, we want Mr. Horton to succeed and be prosperous in what he does. But at the same time, we want that, that to happen in a manner that conforms to the area that it's in, you know, and is acceptable. So it's what I'd like to sort of throw out there. My, I personally have a little bit issue with the salvage vehicles being out there and just being open and not have something around. Also have a little bit of issue with the open space between the graveyard and being able to look right down there on that. With that being said, I, I would like to see, I know we're talking about vegetative buffer, but I'd also like to see some additional screening there, some type of fencing or something. And that makes it consistent with what we've already required other folks at EDK to do. And I think that would go a long ways, you know, and screening, especially up there, what is that, that's the east side? Screening that off from the, uh, cemetery. Uh, and I think there's, and the other part of it is I had, I can't begin to tell you how many people that come to me and have commented on the, uh, and have commented on the uh lack of tidiness that's there. So it, it seemed like there was a lot of work to do. Commissioner Bailey was talking about getting some help from E D C and some of our professional engineers, and all that's going to take time. Uh. In the meantime, well, that's what takes the time to do it. I don't know if we can start in good faith and prove what we've got here based on what we've proposed tonight. If Mr. Horton would, you know, start, have like a good faith effort, start cleaning up, which I understand he already has. And start getting trash up and doing all that kind of stuff and, and get with you and start making some additional plans about water, some additional fencing, some of the things we've proposed here tonight. And then maybe we go down the road a little ways and then take this back up. Now, that's just my two cents, because I, I'm not comfortable right now myself with making a decision of what we have for is based on everything that I heard. So let's look, that's just my two cents.
Um, Jack, you did mention something about putting some things in under the conditions. Um, I know that you said the vegetative buffering and all of that. Um, I have a concern about the appearance and everything. Um, but is that as far as the, the changing or adding the, the fencing with the uh covering so that the, the trucks and all of that that's going to be in that particular spot? Can it be part of the condition to add along with it?
Yes, yes. Two things need to happen. One, it is brought up, but we suggested as a condition, which it is being okay. And Mr. 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 Horton's got it agreed to. Um, so in other words, the board can't uh suggest conditions and approve those conditions if the owner hasn't seen. So that, 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 just make sure that's clear. We, my credence.
Yes, because this may be the first one you've done since we made the changes to the U V O. Is it that first conditional?
It may be another.
But this is a sort of a new process to you all, where you used to have conditional use rezonings and you'd have the rezone as well as the consider, permit consideration. So that, that's why we swear witnesses in and all that. Uh, but under the rules of conditional zoning, it's all a legislative process. There's no quasi additional to it. And uh, and one of the requirements of conditional zoning is uh the rules, the conditions that apply to that site only. They have to be fashioned in such a way and be agreed to so that you know what the rules are for that property. So hence is called conditional zoning. The conditions attached to the actual rezoning. Because this would be a rezoning for A R to public.
Commercial condition.
And the rules that will to that six or seven acre zoning district are these conditions. So we have to get them all, but one of the requirements is he has to read to them. That's just out of the statute.
And Mr. Moon, just to build off of, one other thought I have, I'm kicking over William, uh was, was built off of. Here for ten, if that is desired of order, see, we, we table this public hearing and bring it back. Two weeks, four weeks, whatever it means. Staff is more than happy to move with the African owner. And we'll lose them if they convert tonight. And uh, we can come together with a consent uh condition list, bring that back to consideration. Now, staff has no problem at all, we go that route too.
I just want to make sure, you know, if we're table, I just want to make sure that because of the way this got brought to us, two complaints, that we're not uh setting it up for some kind of failure down the line because we run into a timeframe on, on code violations. Uh, so, because Bryce is actually trying to clean it up. So I don't want to table this in an effort to get this to go through and help, help on, or A, for getting trouble of our B.
We, William and I uh have, have done this on a few cases initially or since. It started with a notice of obligation. Bryce came in and said, we started the communication. We have typically made that a stay once applications are good made.
Okay.
Pre-developing application was made, conditions only application was made. So we, we did not uh pursue any civil penalties or civil actions uh for this case. It's just been in a stay since that hour. Now, um, if there's to other direction the board was wanting to give staff uh beyond that, because it's, it's not allowing the U V O how long a stay lasts and when it expires and so forth. Glad to honor that, you know, if it's uh you get six months or eight months or whatever that is to get your plan approved and get the approvals made. If you put a timeline on it, uh that could be a condition of the approval as well. And that would give staff good guidance on what the expectation of the board community is. And we don't have that current.
So a timeframe is hard for me to determine because of all the, there's a lot of stuff in this listed, A through double A. It's outside of his control as far as timeframe is. Multiple surveys have to be obtained, site plans. Uh, I'm assuming experts have to hire and draw those up.
Yes.
So I, I need guidance from other people on what a perfect timeframe is. Well, if he calls a surveyor and the survey says, well, I can't get you in for sixty days and it looks solid. How does that affect this?
I, I think otherwise, what we've done in the past is um, you know, communicate with the app and say uh this is, this is the next checklist to work on. If this item is submitted within and we work together on a date, thirty, sixty days, whatever it is. If that's honor, we keep on going. If it's not honor, then we start, then we start to turn around.
See, so that'd be almost a case by case basis, based on progress.
That's normal with.
That's normal.
So this is not going to handle these applications.
So, yeah, we don't intend to.
We don't want to do that.
We should, but.
Well, one thing that I do want to say is that in listening to what Terrell said is that he's been working with Jack and with him mainly trying to work to get the things done that he needs to do. I think that's showing that he's, he's willing to do it for himself and making sure that what's happening within the town, that everything looks presentable. So I think that's the one thing that we also have to look at is that he is going forward and working hand in hand with Jack.
I've known Bryce for a lot of years, he's a hard worker, works as well. And if you tell him how to leave A B and C, it will get done.
And I think, I would think we, we as board appreciate the effort he's made. And, you know, and so we want, we in turn want to help now.
So any other question?
I just had one, um, this might be a question for William. So we got all these conditions here. Uh, and a condition used for zoning from A R to H C C. And there's talk about, well, what can you do now to kind of forward things? So it, is he allowed to do any of these conditions without changing it to from A R to H C C?
Sure. I mean, if he wanted to, like Jack, I mean, if you want to get a head start on planting trees or.
Because I don't want, I don't want him to, I don't want us to say, well, do, do this, this, and this, and this, and then all of a sudden we say, oh, no, no, no.
Yeah.
We made a mistake, you can't do that.
Yeah, I think there are definitely some things that no matter what the decision of the board will be regarding this conditional zoning, there's still some things that got to be, and the buffer is one of them.
Yeah.
So that, that's definitely something that can happen. This might be done either way.
I, I just don't want to set him up for that.
But other, the other things like landscaping and fencing, you know, if it was denied, but the conditions on this wasn't appropriate, that would be wrong. Uh, but no, Mitch, Mitch and one for sure, the best stands up. Could, could be done.
Anything else? No, we're going to close. Excuse me. If the board wants to put this off indefinitely, that's all that.
That's the fastest you ever moved. We just, we just continue it?
Yeah, if you continued it to a new date and time, uh, it'd be, it wouldn't be a motion to table, it'd be a motion to continue to. Uh, I mean, to recess, excuse me, a motion to recess it to a day and time certain, and points, or whatever. In the City Hall building, but um, wouldn't have to renotice it. And whatever, you might want, that's Jackie made a true list of the, what might become new or altered conditions, how long it might take to estimate that in terms of aiming for a date that you would like to get. Uh, we could have it in the condition that you would feel better about approving. What's the content?
What are the, I think, recessing, but I'm, I'm looking at what are we saying? Are we saying two weeks, four weeks? What, what's, what are we?
Well, next two days.
What, what's, what's a reasonable time that, that, that we, because we, I, we don't want to, you know, hinder things, but what's reasonable?
I can move pretty, I'm, second move pretty quick. Um, I would say the eighteenth of April would be a full month. I know that'd be enough, but I think I got a heavy load for the eighth already. Something like this on to.
Six on the fourth.
We, we have a heavy load on the fourth, so we don't need to do the fourth.
What, what can we say since Bryce is going to be working with Jack? Some of the things we determined, and let Jack report back to us when it, it looks like. Because there is a lot of stuff already planned, waiting now. Well, if you do that, you'd have to start up, I mean, that start up, pick a date, pick it. You could always reach the date that you set tonight. And, and, and recess it again, if it is not ready.
Okay, I'm pretty sure the eighteenth would, would, I would be more comfortable with the eighteenth, I'll be honest with you. Oh.
Uh, April?
Eighteen. Is that right, Jim, for April eighteen?
No, I thought you said you have a lot of stuff on that.
Well, it's, it's text and minutes, but if you give us a chance to come back if I think it, take it on time. Push it to another.
All right.
April four, five, this is Susan.
We need to have some kind of motion for that.
Yes, please, if you would um recess the public hearing to um April the eighteenth at six thirty here at the library. Thank you.
Second.
All right, I'll load the papers down, both like sign. And the public hearing has been postponed until April eight.
Resentance.
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 Resentance, yeah. All right, thanks, everybody. Next, what's next? Next, new business, street closing.
I was going to talk to you earlier, but I don't know.
All right. Next, it's the great closing, Jack.
Mr. Chairman, follow me, Jack. Yes, sir. Um, board members, we've got a street closing request on Paxton Street. Not for me, we're Paxton Street, it's on the South Chatham Avenue, we're heading in toward Bonley. It'll be our last road on the right in our city limits, where you got a city limits. It's a gravel road maintained by the state of Carolina.
Just practice on it.
Just pass all, just pass the, uh, speed source. Uh, there may be a old house down there, on this road, um, it's a farmland. And then the road, um, yanked onto what used to be home, property owned by a high court. And that property has been purchased by Mr. Craig and more of a rule, Craig's here with us. Uh, he's representative of Ben Affleck, and he'll make the decision. Um, Craig came to me sometime back as we, we can purchase the property and was concerned about this road. It was, uh, and not only just Craig, but the golf course. There were folks using this way to access the golf course and maybe done some vandalism of, of riding vehicles on the golf course. Uh, just trespassing, concerned. And um, this right away and this maintenance, the D O T controls, goes into the property that's now being purchased by Mr. Wood. Who owns the home and lives at this site now. And uh, we'd like to uh abandon uh this right away, have the D O T abandon their maintenance and manage right away to meet um uh their standards for turnaround. And you'll see that in your package. So Mr. Atwater made the request to do this. This is going to take uh the one sixty um A dash two ninety-nine process. Singleton one, it was, we're closing East Third Street or rebounding on Third Street, I should say. Uh, so you require a public hearing and notification paper because the road's maintained and uh in use. The uh, the turnaround I was talking about, Craig has, uh, Mr. Wood is, is tired of vanfishing and had drawn a, what the turnarounds will look like on page sixty-five. It shows where the right away would end and also have a T turnaround meets D O T standards. The D O T is going to continue to maintain the turnaround and uh to that point where the right away ends. So I don't know the extent of how much right away is being removed um in length. Craig, do you know?
I haven't measured that. I didn't know specifically that, yes.
Yeah, you can see how far the right away goes into the property on page sixty-four. Uh, but don't have a specific measurement, it's several hundred feet. It will be removed, but uh, nobody's using the road at this time. It's uh not, not being used or serving a purpose. All of it's being closed, it's located in Carrollon, Blue property.
If, if, if I'm reading this right, it looks like cutting short would stop it from going over that, you know, maybe the string.
Who knows?
You have.
Who knows, that's correct. That's a good reference.
And the state is going to maintain the turnaround?
Yes. Continue main turnaround all the way back, Chatham Avenue.
And then, and the state will maintain the road from that turnaround back out to South Chatham.
Yes, sir. So what's occurring this evening is a uh resolution of intent to close. This is uh the ability for us to uh put, put the staffing um process to work. Uh, scheduling the public hearings, sending out letters and doing what we do to schedule that public hearing, which is scheduled for May sixteenth, six per. That's it. So that's the six before not, uh, as you know, Mr. Atwater, we're here for that question for my, uh, I'm finishing my presentation. I, I don't need to add anything to that unless y'all do have questions. We'll be glad to answer whatever we can. Mr. Dala?
Yeah, railroad track, coming down.
You got across the railroad track on Paxton Street. So as soon as you come across, uh, come off of Chatham Avenue, you pass by the mini storage, you have to go across the north and southern road. You sure do. It may show up on the, the aerial photo. Did I, did I catch it on that? Yeah, on page sixty-one. It crosses the railroad, um, just after you come off of Chatham Avenue. There's a creek that runs along the railroad as well.
Did it right before you get to that blue line?
Yep.
That's the blue line, is it?
Yep, and to your east would be the railroad bottom line. And, and it doesn't have, um, stop bars, it's just got your normal uh white and black uh river, yeah, sorry. Other questions? Uh, last thing I was going to point out, this, this property is outside city limits. Uh, but it's in our E P G. So it's still processed. I, we checked that before we got this ball rolling. It's still processed in town, since it's in our family. Other place? No, we just appreciate your consideration doing this. Uh, it's actually going to be nicer there with turnaround than it is now, once they finish that. That somebody wanders in there by mistake, they'll have a place where they can turn around easily rather than driving out through somebody's property. So from Mr. Wood's property, and have a good place to do that.
It's going to be fenced in, so the right was fenced out from.
Sure. Yeah.
Any other question? Any other question? Next step, Jack.
Just considering the resolution, start on page eighty-nine.
Is there anybody else speaking to the public here?
Uh, this is our public here. That would be, uh, this is.
I'm making a motion, we adopt a resolution to turn towns and take, take Patterson Street.
Sorry, that motion is second. No further discussion. Not all of the papers figure out, say aye, all of those codes like signs and motion carries.
All right.
Thank you. See, next, then you're the fourth.
So, uh, tonight, just wanted to bring to the board's attention that, uh, we are continuing to work on trying to get the L P A temporarily, uh, moved out to the mobile given. I think there's a few more inspections that need to be done and the state needs to come and move their equipment and then they'll be able to start the renovations, uh, on the, the lower level, uh, where they're located. I also want to introduce tonight, uh, Bill Zell, uh, who is with us and will be the interim town manager. He started with us today and will be here through the hiring process of the new manager. Bill, would you like to make a few comments?
Sure, thanks, Terrell. Uh, just wanted to thank the, uh, the board for, uh, giving you this opportunity. I appreciate that and I look forward to working with you and, and your great staff. And we're gonna meet, uh, most of them today and so. Have a good day.
You, you won't tell them what sort of your background is, because you, 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 you're good, you're pretty good at that, great.
Uh, Chris Carrigan. Uh, I, uh, worked thirty years basically in local government, uh, Davidson County, uh, about half of it. And then I spent the last fourteen years of my career as Aberdeen's town manager. So, in our own block. I look forward to, to whenever it's going to be. And, uh, this is my sixth, six opportunities to do an interim, so I look forward to, I, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. And, and I, and I will say this, I don't enjoy it enough to go full time. I enjoy it because we're delighted to be at the time.
We certainly appreciate you coming, working with us, coming tonight and introducing yourself. And we look forward to working with you in this transition period that we're currently going through. We look, thank you, thank you. All right.
And with that, so tonight is my last board meeting as town manager. And I again would like to thank the board for your support and for the opportunities afforded me while working for Silver City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also would like to thank the staff for your support for working with me and for your commitment to the task. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
They're gonna leave in town though, I'd have worked mine. I will be here. Anything else?
That is it.
It's a couple of reminders, and we gonna say this.
Uh, that, I say that. Uh, I was asked to remind the board of your special call meeting, Thursday evening at six thirty here. Six o'clock.
Yeah. Yep, six o'clock. And on that subject, I'll remind you that Friday, having a Roland cookout.
Floating.
What? Roland floating, and you know, you know, you're like, it'll be, uh, what, the eleventh?
Eleven thirty-one.
Eleven thirty-one with, uh, a fire station. And this will be, it'll be hamburger, hot dogs, just drop in when you can, be Roy's last two raw, I don't know, maybe rapid with toilet paper. But anyway, it'd be a, send off party for him, so all of you can attend, you know, go up. Wonder what we get, Nancy? Nothing ever. Okay, any other departments? And attorney? Any comment from the government body?
I'd just like to say thank you for Roy for, for all of your, your hardworking service and you, you, I think you left, you've left the town in a better place than the founder. Yeah.
That's exactly right. All right. Thank you, lots, you did a good job.